Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, the roll is ready for calling. We're ready for the roll call. Is it seven by ... seven by ...
Councilman Duiper?
Present.
Councilman Daley?
Here.
Councilman Menard?
Present.
New York, Richard Rupeski?
Here.
And Mayor Rupeski?
Aki.
All present.
Okay, we have a closed session report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council has been in closed session on a real property matter was on the agenda as item C. And on that matter, the council received a report and gave direction. There was no final action taken at that time, but that matter will be before you for action as item number 11 on the agenda. We also had, under the Housing Authority Agenda, closed session items A and B, C, A and B, which were real property matters where again, direction was given, report received, no final action taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the invocation and pledge allegiance led by our mayor, Pro Tem, Fupesky.
Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for giving us the opportunity to come together and serve our community. We ask that you give us wisdom that we may preside and get home at a piece an hour. To this name, amen.
No, sir.
Good evening. My name is R.A. Barnett. I go by Barney as a nickname. And I'll take you back just a moment to January 24th of 2002. That's when, let me hand the City Council unanimous where you approved supporting the High Grove MetroLink station. Some of you may not remember that. It's been a long time. We've also had support from the city, Grant Terrace, a lot of residents, people from both counties. And what we're concerned with is that just one mile away from the High Grove location, they're planning on building a MetroLink stop, which is actually on a branch line instead of the main line. So if you will, I left some copies of the High Grove Happenings newspaper here. Excuse me. My wife and I own the paper, and I'm chairman of the High Grove Municipal Advisory Council for the last 12 years. So this has been a 12-year battle. And it's been basically about the people that have control of the money in Riverside County for transportation issues and what the people from both sides of the county line want as a MetroLink stop. If you would please read the information over, look at the potential that we have in High Grove of 1,500 acres of vacant land, assuming there'll be houses, that we need transportation between Riverside and San Bernardino Counties, and compare that with where the plan is to build a station. If you read these items, please look at them and let them asking tonight is consider giving another layer of support for the High Grove MetroLink station instead of the Marbella station. As you will read, there's $19 million difference in the two locations and not only one mile apart. The High Grove station is right on the BNSF main line. The other station that they're gonna build is on a branch line and mile away from the existing trains that go by there seven days a week. So if you will, read it over and we'd ask for your continued support. It may be too late, but both properties are still vacant and we're still looking at having them go ahead and improve the Marbella site and sell it because the station isn't needed at that location. So with your approval, I thank you for allowing me to speak, and if we can, give us a ladder of support. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Mr. Barnett. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on any item not on the agenda?
Do we have documentation on what he just addressed? Because I don't see him.
Well, it's not. He's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Did you, did you give us a handout or just the paper?
This is?
Yeah.
I can fill you in on that.
Okay. There's someone who'd like to speak? State your name and address.
Hi, my name is Samuel Barnes. Address is 26210, Mission Road, just on the north side of Mission Road. I just had a question and was wondering if there is anyone could give me feedback about the house, my brother and I, about a year and a half ago, and there's actually no internet access there. It's right in the middle of Loma Linda, but there's no time, or Time Warner, the cable companies won't give internet access. They don't have cable to that side of the street. And the DSL company refuses to give internet access. Don't know why, they won't tell me. And then I contacted the, about, I was interested in the municipal fiber project you guys have here, but I guess that's also on the other side of Mission Road. And so I was just wondering if there's any plans to build out that fiber network more extensively and if that project is moving forward because we, there's no internet at the house, which is kind of a problem. What's in your crosshairs, Ken? A skeet. Right. The north side, yeah.
You're on the north side.
Yeah.
So the, as that area develops, the special planning area D, as that develops, then service will be provided to whatever's built on the north side. And just like we did with the one, two, three houses that were kind of encompassed in that development, we would extend to those existing handful of houses there on the north side of the street.
Is there a timeline for that or ...?
It would be dependent upon development.
So, but the Time Warner cable doesn't service?
No, they're, they're, they're cabled on the other side of the road also. They, they don't, they don't have anything. None of the houses on that side of the road have cable or cable internet. There's phone line, but they, the DSL company won't, won't give internet access for some reason.
Can, can you not do a shortcut?
We could, I mean, we could extend it, but it would be at the homeowner's expense. And, um...
Well, you can talk to them about that because there, there is a way to get them there.
Okay. And who would I, um...
He's right there.
What's in your ...
He just spoke up. Okay. Anybody else from the public?
So, so I just want to understand, there, there's a pipe there, but it only addresses the south side because that's where the population is, not the north side?
Well, the pipe is on the south side, so we have to get it across the road, which involves cutting, you know, burying the pipe under Mission Road and cutting the street.
Okay. And that's, that's dependent on Time Warner?
No.
Well, sort of the city service, but I'm sure Time Warner's in the same position and Verizon's probably in the same position as well. There's those half dozen houses on the north side that were never part of the development on the south.
So once, once the VA clinic goes in and developments, and developments occur around them, then we expect that the north side of that pipe will be activated.
Correct. Ultimately, there'd be houses there on the north side, development, the school, depending on which building we're talking about, and then that would bring that, extend the service to that point.
Is it just those, those six houses, the houses behind, a little farther north, just behind it, or how do they get their internet?
I, I don't know that anybody north of Mount of Mission gets any kind of service outside of DSL.
So all those houses in between Mission and Redlands Boulevard and east of Mountain View don't get internet?
No. For, to the west, he's talking about those, you drive down Mission right across the entrance to the KV track.
Uh huh.
There's three or four or five houses that were, that have been there for a long time, never got picked up as part of the development. Once you get farther to the west past the historic park, there's infrastructure in there from Time Warner and Verizon.
I've had multiple people talk with me who are investors in Cal 88, and there's transitions occurring there. As Cal 88 begins to become developed, then this will all evolve as well, I'm assuming.
Correct.
I would like to think as soon as the VA project goes in, that'll probably, when they're bringing the ...
The VA project will be too far north, so it'll have to be developed along Mission Road.
But there's gonna be houses somewhere around the VA development, I understood.
Ultimately, yes.
Yeah. Okay. It's a good point. We feel your pain, so hopefully this works out.
Okay. Any other comments? I don't see any more, so we'll move on to item number one. We have a presentation of a proclamation to Clark Morrow of the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department declaring April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And, so we have the proclamation? They're going for it. We left the proclamation in the back.
Yes, sorry.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Clark Morrow. I'm with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department out of the Public Affairs Division, but I'm accepting the proclamation tonight on behalf of Children's Network of San Bernardino County. Children's Network has invited all 24 cities in the county to join us by issuing a proclamation in support of Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we're certainly appreciative of the fact that Loma Linda has issued that proclamation. Just a few quick facts. Child abuse referrals received in San Bernardino County in 2013 totaled 29,062. And you might be interested in hearing that in Loma Linda, there were 230 referrals for child abuse in the year 2013 and 230 the year before that. So you're holding steady. The number has now gone up, and of course, we want that number to go down. One of the ways in which we can do that is by educating the public, and one of the things, one of the most important facts we want to get out to the public is the fact that child abuse can always be reported by calling 211. I have some posters here, some 211 posters. I have some blue ribbon pins that I'll leave here for everyone. The Blue Ribbon Campaign goes back to 1989, and that is part of this entire April Child Abuse Prevention Month campaign. And we, we appreciate you taking part in that campaign and making this proclamation. Thank you very much, and I'll leave these items here in the back.
And we have the proclamation here. Okay. Item number two, we have a public hearing. Council Bill R-2014-09, Determining Costs Related to the Weed Abatement Program for Last Fall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's amazing how fast time flies. We're here again. So I'm here this evening to present the report for the fall of 2013 Weed Abatement Program. You have the packet in front of you. Basically, I can just give you a quick rundown. The program started, the fall season started this year, September 3rd. 445 parcels were inspected. Of those, 177 of them needed to have letters sent to them to clean up. And of those, ultimately, by October 1st, when a second inspection was done, I believe it was 26 of them needed to have remediation done by the city contractor. And ultimately, they were given time to, to pay the fees that were given to us by the contractor. Out of those, we have 21 that choose, for whatever reason, to have their, their bills be sent by your decision tonight to go to the county to be put on the tax rolls either as an assessment or a lien. And I'm here to answer any questions.
I see Lewis Group is on there. Lewis Investments on here.
Well, I, I had a question. I'm just curious, since, I guess, a lot of these people choose to have the city, you know, do it for them, and then they pay the extra administrative fee. So if you, if you happen to know by memory, I know you, you list the adri, the actual notices in here, but I'm noticing Southern Eastern Conference, they have two properties, and I guess combined, they decided to go ahead and spend about $800. I'm just curious, how much land are we talking about there that you guys ended up having to clean up? It's a Southern Eastern SDA conference?
Southeastern SDA. Page two.
They have two parcels? What exactly do they have done for $800? I'm just curious. Yeah. So what is it you did? You just kind of took a, a truck and cleaned out the land, or what did you do?
Well, yeah, on Mission Road, they, they ...
Okay. So I take it that it's cheaper to have the city do it than to have them hire their own people, I guess? Okay.
That's why many times you'll see these same folks in there.
If not, I'll let you do them. You take care of it. Okay.
Councilman Fupesky's been quite gentle with this. Let me see if I understand. Weed abatement, we send out notices to tell them they need to take care of their weeds, correct?
Correct.
So these are delinquent or deadbeat landowners that don't take care of their weeds?
Not necessarily.
Okay, that's what I need to understand.
It also said, I used to get these every year, so I've had experience.
Point of experience.
I've been off the rolls for five years now, but it, it basically says, if you don't, we will do it, and this will be the charge. And then people can make a choice, you know? They, they, they try to contact someone to do it. And when I see how little these people are paying, I would have gladly paid that compared to what, what I went through to weed whack my property. So, you know, I don't think it's a bad deal.
What Dr. Daley's trying to say is that folks shouldn't have to be, got to the point where they have to get a notice from the city. They should have taken care of it themselves. Like, I'm assuming that's ...
I agree. You're absolutely right. I'd be embarrassed if I was one of the people on here.
So, some of these are, are larger pieces of property that are undeveloped, and so they, you're right, our, our city contractor is extremely reasonable, so they ...
Yeah, but if I own it, I own it. It's my responsibility to maintain it.
I agree.
They end up paying it. No, I understand that. Well, actually, these listed here didn't pay. They elected for, just to go onto their property taxes, which is like a two-step. That's, that's saying, we're gonna let, and let the city do it, and we're not gonna pay for it.
Okay. So, so they were sent the bill and were sending them to the county for collections. So you're right, they're, they didn't pay their bill, but ...
It's a two-step process. First off, you send, you send a notice saying, hey, clean up your, your weeds, which they ignore. Then you send a bill saying, hey, we cleaned it up for you, please pay us, and they ignore it a second time, and then we send it to the county to add on to the property taxes.
Is that the correct ...
Correct.
Yeah. No, this is bad news. I'm sorry. And, and I see some names on here I recognize from a year ago, I think. Maybe we should charge more. I'm delighted that I don't see the mayor's name on here.
I was, I was never on this list. I always obeyed it when I was okay, but I've never, but seeing how cheap it was, I should have been on the list.
Why are there no fines attached? Yeah.
Well, there's, there's, the city gets 30% of the fee or a minimum of $100 for administration fees for handling it all. Jim, you know, Jim handles a lot of paperwork back and forth, and so does Pam as far as contacts in the county, getting all this on the rolls. So the city gets a reimbursement in that fashion. The, you know, the history of that, some of the properties, and it gets to a point that there will be, there will be citations involved, and there has been, but for the most part, this usually gets taken care of at this point.
Who is General Telephone? I don't remember. Is that, is that a company or ...? Yeah. And, and in my mind, we need to look at posting this publicly somehow so that, you know, people ...
Some cities, we, we go over and above. Some cities, for instance, Redlands, they posted in the newspaper one time when it comes to time for weed abatement, and that's all they do. And then the next thing they, the people either take care of it or they get the bills from the contractor. We, we go over and above and we, you know, we give them better ...
Trying to protect the, the delinquent landowners.
Well, we got them all the way from the Mr. Railroad himself, that, you know, they're very difficult, and Verizon and all the lands that they own, and, you know, are difficult.
How much time goes between you giving notice to the point where you actually do it for them?
We started this process in September 3rd. First rein inspection was October 1st, I believe. Yes.
Smaller list than previous year.
It's pretty standard about the mid, low to mid twenties, but ultimately, it's roughly the same group every time that it's coming up.
Yeah, I do too. I agree.
But if you think about it, it's, it's a good deal. You get a notice, a month later they do it, by the time you put it on your, on your tax bill, you won't pay for it for a year and a half.
The, the problem is, it should be in the paper. There's, there should be in the paper. There's other costs that aren't figured into this, and it's the cost of the staff to prepare and do all this, whether it be Pam or the fire service and all the, all the other things. So it's not just the cost of tilling weeds. I agree.
Okay. So is there a motion to proceed to ...? Oh, yeah. Okay. Good. Would the public like to add commentary to what we've already done? Here's your chance. No one passionate about this as passionate as you, so.
No one as passionate as me, evidently.
And, now where's your, do you have a motion to hang a ...
Tell, yeah, tell me where my, where my flexibility is, because I think it ought to be published. These are delinquent property owners that are not carrying their weeds out.
I would suggest, if you added a fine, that would make more of a, an impact than the newspaper. If you're, if you're wanting to lower this or make it worth our while, that probably would ...
Can we, what would that fine be?
We could do a little research and burden back a staff report on what those options might be to you, if that's what you'd like to see.
And we'll spend as much or more on legal bills to, to put together the bill.
It's just we deal with this every year, and it's frustrating that people, the weeds grow and ignore it and wait until they get hammered, and then they pay it. And we give them a deal in the process. It doesn't make sense to me.
We're here to serve. I would, I would like to take that opportunity and give direction to staff if they could present something, do a little research, not anything extensive, to see where other communities stand in, in relation to fees and some of those other assessments.
I can tell you that, and I agree with you, but I can tell you that where, where we get the payback, big time, coming from another city ...
Say that again?
Where we get the payback very, in, in, in big time is, coming from another city for a lot of years, where there's very low fire prevention, they burn things constantly. And then, you know, your crews are out in the field constantly, your rigs are constantly in the field, all, all that is, is time and time again.
We're ultimately saving money because we're taking care of the problem.
In the big picture, you really are, yeah. But I agree with you, what you're saying, and we'll, we'll look into it and see if there's, what, what amounts would be appropriate for a citation, but in the long, in the big scheme picture of things, you, you win in a long run.
Well, I, I would support what Councilman Duiper suggested, and that is that we look at, how can we make this painful enough that people will take care of it themselves? Okay. Agree.
The city's contractor, however, likes this list, so.
Okay.
The city's contractor, however, does appreciate our ...
Well, we want responsible citizens, though. My, my vision is, well, my, my guess is we're gonna have the same outcome, we're just gonna tack on some extra money that'll go on to those, those property taxes and the pharmacy fees. Maybe to cover our staff costs in the process or something. The people that blow it off, there should be some pain. That's the bottom line.
So do you have a motion to support what, what staff proposed to send these to the county for collections? We have to do that as well.
I'll second.
Any other discussion about that?
And what's the follow-up in terms of what the Councilman Duiper and I have discussed? To bring it back with the recommendation? Okay. I'm good with that.
There's nothing agendized beyond what we're doing right now.
I'm good with that. Correct. The motion is to receive and approve the report and adopt the resolution establishing the liens and assessments.
Yes.
Because we've given poor old Mr. Lipinski all kinds of problems, and I intend to continue to press that agenda, but it's not fair to him if we let these people skate by.
Well, I don't think anybody's skating. They're getting a bill.
But they're getting a deal.
That's just because we have a good contractor, but I think that's, I think that's smart, smart city business.
All right.
Okay. So can we either vote, those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Those no? Unanimous? And other councils are telling me that they get away with a lot less repetition than we do, but this is Loma Linda.
Well, this is a new statute. There's no case law. I just am conservative on the way we do it, but, uh...
Yeah, we just approved. Now I've lost my agenda. We approved something.
We have Council Bill R-01409.
But this comes right back to the, the Lipinski issue. It's the same issue. How come his name's not on here? I don't know. They got the heck out of here. I don't blame them.
Because we've not done the abatement work there yet. So if, if, if the Lipinski issue resolves itself to the point that the city's forced to go on and do the work, then we'll hire the contractor and do the work, and he'll get the bill, and he'll be on the list.
He'll get the same contractor at the same rates. There's just probably a lot more work to do there, and so he's probably has a more extensive bill, but he'll get the same contractor.
Okay. So the action was to approve the resolution, and that was done unanimously.
Yes. The Council Bill R-2014-09 Resolution passed unanimously.
And the record reflects that who voted what?
It was unanimous, so that's pretty obvious.
That's the same as last time. I don't think it's gonna cut it, but anyway.
Unanimity. Okay. The consent calendar?
Move it.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do have a question on number seven. I don't see any documentation, and I don't understand it.
If you look at item number seven, this is my mapping there. If you look at the, the color map in the back, is, is the property is located on the south side of Barton Road by New Jersey. It is in, it's in the package. Right now, the, the property is in the county of San Bernardino area, but in the city sphere of influence. To be able to get the, the sewer water, they have to, uh, agree ... To be able to get the, uh, the sewer water, they have to, uh, um, agree to sign a, uh, agreement for annexation when they come to, to do annexation for that property.
So they'll bring annex to Loma Linda?
Yes, when, when we ready to annex, yes. So right now, they just fill out the application for a will serve letter that the city willing to serve their water and sewer for the property. And the property owner is still responsible for extending the, uh, the sewer water from Bottom Road.
Does that indicate that they're actually getting close to actually building a church there now? I mean, so they're moving in that direction?
This is a Korean church.
Okay.
Korean church?
This is Dr. John.
Okay. My name is King DeJohn, uh, representing Loma Linda Korean Church, uh, where, uh, serve their best. We are planning to start building in that location within next three to four months.
Oh, good.
Yes, so in the process of getting the permit from the, uh, San Bernardino County, and we'd like to get annexed to Loma Linda when the time comes, and we're asking your permission to use Loma Linda's utility.
Now, will this be in addition to the Grand Terrace Southern Adventist Church, Korean Southern Adventist Church, or this is a new church?
New church, we're selling the, the property in Grand Terrace.
It will truly be Loma Linda, Hong Kong, Kowloon, not, not Grand Terrace?
It is true.
Yes, good.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
It's been called Loma Linda Korean Church for years and it's in, uh, Grand Terrace, so.
Yeah.
Good that you're coming home.
Because there's gonna be two separate churches now, one is Grand Terrace, one's Loma Linda.
No, they're gonna sell that one and move here.
They're selling that and moving down here. Oh, okay, okay.
I attended that church for two years in the nineteen eighties, so if it's, I, I love that church.
Now, is everything to the west of us already annexed?
No, that is, it's kind of an is- it's an island outside the city, um, therefore it's...
Council's being contiguous?
It's not contiguous, that's why we're doing the pre-annexation agreement.
Okay.
So, when there's, when there's development and a reason for us to annex that, we already have their vote for annexation.
So are you ready for a vote? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, those in favor of the consent calendar say aye?
Aye.
Opposed no? It's unanimous. Uh, we just approved the consent calendar unanimously. Congratulations. Uh, next is item nine, Council Bill O dash two thousand fourteen dash zero five, second reading, roll call, vote for a specific plan amendment to amend the East Valley Corridor specific plan. Community development.
This is, uh, this is related to the discussion we had about, uh, the, um, gas station, Mountain View and the freeway. The, uh, number nine and number ten both relate to, um, amending the specific plan, so the specific plan matches the use and, uh, number ten, so that the zoning matches the use to bring the plan and zoning in conformance with the general plan and the use of the property.
Why didn't we do this last week?
You, you did it last week, this is the second reading.
Move it.
Second.
Okay, we need to instruct the... By reading by name only, by title only and whatever else. We need a script. We never get this.
That was, that was part of the motion.
Yeah.
It is entitled, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, amending the East Valley Corridor specific plan from East Valley Corridor, single-family residential, to East Valley Corridor, general commercial, for parcels on the north side of Rosewood Drive, west of Mountain View Avenue, is specific plan amendment number thirteen dash zero three seven. You may vote.
Vote. Yeah.
I have a question about, is, is it only one acre, is it more than an acre? The whole, the whole gas station?
One, one point oh seven acres.
And that includes all three of those houses?
Correct, it's the entire site.
Okay.
It passes unanimously.
Okay, and number ten, Council Bill... Council Bill O dash two thousand fourteen dash zero six, second reading, roll call, vote, zone change, number fourteen dash zero eleven.
I move the item.
Second.
And ask to, to read by title only?
Of Loma Linda, amending the official zoning map of the City of Loma Linda, from city zoning, East Valley Corridor, specific plan, single-family residential, to East Valley Corridor, specific plan, general commercial, for parcels on Rosewood Drive, west of Mountain View Avenue, is zone change number one four dash zero one one. You may vote. It passes unanimously.
Okay. Does her statement that it passed unanimously? And it passed unanimously. Okay. New business, Council Bill R dash two thousand fourteen dash ten, approving an agreement related to property exchange between Sagemont Loma Linda LLC and the city. And this was the subject of our closed session earlier.
This is a proposed exchange of property between Sagemont, uh, Loma Linda and the city for, um, essentially stub pieces of parcels, uh, located at Richardson and Interstate Ten. Um, council has maps and drawings of those, those parcels and they're also in the, the, um, uh, council agenda. Um, it's, the appraisers assessment of those parcels is that they are roughly of equal value. Both of them are so, uh, one is so small that it's really not developable and fragmented, and the other one is landlocked. Um, the exchange will allow both Sagemont and Loma Linda to create useful parcels, um, and, uh, do, do something profitable with those.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
I will move, I just lost it on my agenda, whatever this.
R dash two thousand fourteen dash ten, that one. Second. Okay, any discussion? Do you wanna give some description?
Just one brief comment, uh, as Mr. Boltwitch indicated, the parcels are approximately equal value. There's a letter from Benefield Appraisal Service dated as of December twelfth, two thousand thirteen, that, uh, that reflects this, copies with a clear connection, which will be made part of the record as part of tonight's proceedings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just a general question, why would this item not have a public hearing? So, any agreement is not subject to public participation?
Well, uh, the public has the right to comment upon any agenda item if they choose to, uh, in the absence of that, there's no requirement for a formal public hearing.
Unless it's an ordinance? Unless it's an ordinance?
Yes.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and there's been a motion and a second. Uh, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed no? Uh, we just passed Council Bill R dash two thousand fourteen dash ten unanimously, and Councilman Leonard and I will now exit the room for conflict of interest purposes.
You can go that way. There's cartoons...
I'll make it quick.
There's cartoons on it with that.
It, it is physically very fast, it's, uh, it'd be...
Don't get too comfortable.
I actually asked you about this item, so I think you just explained to me quickly that it's...
Yes, what happened is that in September ten, the City Council approved an agreement between the city and, uh, university, which required to widen Campus Street, uh, between Bottom Road and Mona Bay, Mona Way, where we spread, pretty much split the cost. During the construction, university wanted to do the additional improvement to the, the nursing school parking lot and the left driveway on the, the back of the nursing school, where they want to use our contractor to do the work and to pay for it. So, the cost for tho- those improvements is eighty-nine thousand, three and seventy-five. So now we are, bring to the council to accept that money so we can pay the contractors, that's all.
Do I hear a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Uh, I guess we ask for a vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Let the rec- reflect that...
We're quick on receiving money.
Yeah.
And the project completed, looked nice, we got compliments from it, so.
Let the record reflect that the item was...
Work is a lot easier now.
Was passed unanimously with Mr. Duper, Mr. Daley, and Mr. Breskow, all voting yes on the item. Thank you.
See how fast it goes when you're not here. It's pedal.
Yeah. I'll just skip all of them. Okay, reports of councilmen. Reports of officers. We've got number thirteen, statistical report from the sheriff's department.
Evening Mayor and City Councilman, I have a lengthy report that should take about two hours. We're ready. To go over the statistics for the law enforcement.
Followed by a three to two vote.
Play ball.
Sorry.
Uh, a quick review of the, uh, two, uh, twenty thirteen stats for the City of Loma Linda and the activities. What I have here is a breakdown of the crime statistics for the City of Loma Linda from twenty ten through twenty thirteen. Um, murders, hundred percent reduction, and I, I believe the mayor pointed out once before, that was not a crime, murder we should have got credit for, but we did. Um, the rape that we did have reported last year, um, after an investigation, the, um, it was learned that it was falsely reported and did not occur. I mean, uh, five of the ten robberies that occurred last year were solved by arrest. And during that time, you can also see how we had a reduction in, uh, deputy hours, where we're at now is three, three hundred and thirty-six hours in twenty thirteen, one traffic officer. We are splitting a detective with the City of Grand Terrace to save money, and we also reduced the SSS position by one in twenty eleven, that's cost savings. The, uh, GTAs, as you see in twenty eleven to twenty twelve, a huge spike, and we're staying consistent there, that's pretty much affecting everybody within the M N M part right now. I'm sorry, grand theft autos and GTAs. And, you know, as Loma Linda's close proximity to the, uh, freeway and all the parking lots here, it makes it a prime target for those individuals who wanna shop and take things from them.
Is there's recommendations about how to deal with that? I mean, that's a...
That is coming up, sir. The, uh, deputy reports in twenty eleven, we had a, a pretty good spike and, uh, it's staying pretty much consistent with twenty twelve to twenty thirteen, even though we have had a, a little bit of reduction in staff, we're still staying consistent with the reports that the deputies are taking. And that's, uh, written reports. Here is the arrests. Um, we did have the, a drop from twenty twelve to twenty thirteen. In twenty twelve, Loma Linda did lead all of the, uh, sheriff, sheriff's department stations with the deputy to arrest ratio. Uh, within the county this year, with eight hundred and twenty-two arrests, it was number two for all stations, with an eighty-five point six arrest average per deputy assigned here. Central station, the county area, was, uh, first for the, uh, department. So it just, uh, indicates that the, um, deputies working here in Loma Linda are staying active.
Can you go back and explain the detail on that a little more? I mean, I appreciate that the deputies are active, but I'm a little concerned about what they're active about, uh, what, um, can you give me some kind of breakdown of what the arrests are?
Uh, the, the arrests vary from the gamut of crimes, um, warrants. We do have a lot of arrests...
What I'm looking for is are, are there violent crimes in here, or is this petty theft, or what?
Well, if you go back, um, right here, you can see aggravated assaults increased ninety-three percent in the city last year.
Wow.
And simple assaults went down thirty-one percent.
And before you get to the end of your, of your report, you're gonna have recommendations of what we can do to address this, 'cause this is not a good trend.
Well, a, a lot of these crimes unfortunately cannot be preventive, and some are, you know, people that live together don't get along, and, and that is something that we just can't prevent.
Yeah, but... Part, part of that, too, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure you're gonna get to this argument, that we reduced hours, um, we reduced some of our deputy sheriff time out there, so that's gonna probably mean that those reduced hours, that's probably why we have the less arrests compared to the previous year. Yeah, but we have more arrests. If you look at aggravated assault, we're up ninety-three percent.
That's reported crimes, these are reported crimes.
These aren't necessarily arrests. Ah, okay.
And, and with that, with the reduction in hours, we have less proactive patrol, which, which equates to a, you know, a reduced amount of arrests, which would also be an indication this year, or I'm sorry, last year. And then again, that is the, um, reports taken over the years.
You do, of course, explain why maybe if more of that guy coming out.
Well, you do have the, um, governor's...
Get out of jail early.
Yeah, the governor's solution to save money for the state is to, uh, let criminals out. Unfortunately, they're not rehabilitated, so that you do have, um, that population that, that hit, um, our local communities, and they're taking advantage of their ongoing criminal enterprise.
I mean, I understand that, but I'm looking for a breakdown on the eight eighty-two.
I, I can get you that breakdown of arrests.
I'd like to see that.
Okay.
It's important in my mind.
Not to speak for you, but a lot of the times when people get pulled over, you find that people have warrants for the rest for a number of issues, and that's a lot of their rest rights.
That is a sufficient amount, but you also have a lot of these larcenies and burglaries being solved, where those, those people are also going to jail.
What is the definition of a larceny again?
It's the type of theft.
Okay.
The, um, calls for, for service did drop from twenty twelve to twenty thirteen, and we're looking at this where the, it's more proactive patrol, because this is total activity from twenty twelve to twenty thirteen. So we did see a reduction in proactive patrol, which would be traffic stops or pedestrian checks during that period of time. Calls for service by hour, this is a breakdown of, um, January of fourteen. A- a- as we all know, that the City of Loma Linda during business hours sees a, a increase of traffic, and, you know, some say fifty thousand to eighty thousand people come into the city during working hours. And as you can see here, from eight o'clock, nine o'clock in the morning, we start seeing a jump in calls for service till about eighteen hundred hours in the evening, or, or about six o'clock in the evening. And when you look at a breakdown of seven days a week, you can tell the difference between weekdays and weekends. There's about a fifteen to twenty call difference between Saturdays and Sundays and Monday through Friday.
Eight days and one weekend.
That is correct. Some good news is that, uh, there's been a reduction in traffic collision investigations. Um, some people think that, that that can be caused by construction, because people see construction signs, so they slow down and, and there's a less chance of running into each other. I don't know if that's true or not. Um, we have done some, um, traffic enforcement programs, we just concluded a pedestrian walk, we've done some, um, speed and, um, stoplight and stop sign, um, programs where we had multiple officers involved in that. So, you may see that, uh, that extra manpower and combined forces, people see that, slow down. That's a significant difference between, uh, twenty eleven and twenty thirteen. That's a significant difference between twenty-eleven and twenty-thirteen. Maybe the city manager's just making the road so well nobody's having any-
Could also be our part-time traffic engineer slash mayor.
The reduction of stop signs. This is kind of interesting, uh, just for the community here in Loma Linda, because it is a medical community. As we responded to two-hundred-and-thirty-five calls for service for people who were in crisis, meaning that, um, they were considering suicide or contemplating suicide. And out of that amount of calls, we actually transported a hundred-and-ninety-one people to facilities to seek treatment. And this also accounts for the local medical offices here, because they will call us, because their doctors generally do not like to fill out the paperwork necessary to take somebody into a seventy-two-hour evaluation. So we actually take that. And these calls a-actually can range-
Think guys.
Some you may know from two hours to eight hours when you're just disowing one of these people and seeking treatment in the community. Response times, um, and it's broken down actually by the R-E-C to dispatch. That's from the time that the telephone call is answered to the time it is dispatched. Now, those are averages. As you can see, emergencies, obviously, that's with lights and sirens on, and we need to get there in a hurry. You can kind of see how those times increased with the reduction in staff. Dispatch to on-scene stays somewhat consistent because of the size of the city doesn't change, and that's probably based on traffic conditions at the given times. Party one calls would be in-progress calls, alarm calls, burglary in progress, car theft in progress. You can see how the, the receive to dispatch times also increased there, and that would be because the officer's simply on another call, and it takes that amount of time for him to disengage his contact with the public and, and to get ready to, um, receive that call. And again, the, the drive time from the dispatch time seen stays pretty much consistent. Now, on-scene clearing average, it's pretty consistent also. Law enforcement, over the years, legislators in Sacramento continually add laws or add rules, which increases paperwork for our folks. So it's pretty much consistent, though, with thirty-nine, thirty-nine minutes for every contact. I cannot get a, the reason that the received calls and dispatch and dispatch to on-scene are separated is because you can't take an average and an average to give an average, which is, it's not be very accurate. Our volunteer groups, we have reserved deputies, which are nine. They have the same authority and availability to go out on patrol and handle calls as a deputy, paid deputy sheriff. We have nine of those at the station. Citizens on patrol, these are people in the community that drive around in the C-O-P cars. Citizen on patrol, they wear the white shirt. Have fifty-five members, and explorer scouts are the kids under the age of twenty-one who want to be in law enforcement and help us throughout the, the community with certain tasks.
And it's not remained pretty consistent over the years?
It has remained consistent, and we've made a push. We've added quite a few this year, but we've also, also lost some. We, um, actually, um, lost two today because of some of the violence that's out there, and they just didn't want to be connected to that against law enforcement.
And the citizen on patrol, those are primarily retired people?
Um, generally, that's what we look at, is retired people, but we have some that are twenty-three, twenty-four years old that just want to get back to their community.
Good. Looking for a job in a few years.
Not necessarily, that they, they just want to be a part of the law enforcement group. Some are, um, ex-military and, and may have been, and we have quite a few that were in the military police, and they want to stay involved. Our reserve deputies, um, over the past year have been involved in, in patrol, sexual offender compliance checks, parole, probation compliance checks, DUI saturation patrol, and the off-road patrol of the trails. We've been averaging that, I think, about once a month over the past few months, and I think that's working out. I know that the community's really receptive to seeing them out there on the trails.
See if deputies could drive into the south hills and-
Yeah, we have a ATV that they drive, and they're out there.
That's great.
And, uh, they donated four thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-three hours of volunteer time to the central station last year. Our citizens on patrol go out, and there are extra eyes and ears, and they assist with DUI checkpoints. We have a unmarked automated license plate reader car, which takes pictures of license plates. They're out driving that just about every day in the community. They donated to Loma Linda three thousand five-hundred-and-fifty-one hours last year, about nine-point-seven hours a day, if you average it out, seven days a week. I mean, we really rely on these people, and, um, our department couldn't, couldn't operate without them.
Do we recognize those people in any way?
Yes.
You mean they're, who have been there for them last time at the, at the scene of the incident?
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay.
And, and they are just a great resource for us, because they come from all walks of life. I mean, it's tremendous.
And they have radio connections, so if they see something really funky happening, then they-
Absolutely. And, um, we even have them venture into, um, we have them starting to write citations for handicap parking and stuff like that.
And they, they find stolen cars with that license plate reader. They get all excited when they-
They get very excited, yeah.
You and I can share one of those cars in a few minutes.
And our explorer scouts go out on patrol with the deputies and learn what the, the life is of a deputy sheriff. They assist us with office work and help out at DUI checkpoints. The automated license plate readers, they were invented about nineteen-eighties as a way for England to, um, identify cars, which they believed were involved in bombings for the IRA. They actually came up with the technology where they could create a computer base, where they could put in the information about a certain license plate, and they came up with that technology, where it's read by infrared lighting, and it then runs it through a computer system to identify if it was a bomber or an IRA member. That's, uh, since been deployed into the United States mainly for money-making reasons, being the ninety-one toll road. That's being used there. And then, um, they've also deployed for, um, the three or more, you know, some people want to know, how do they know if I have two, three, or four people in my car? And it is the hemoglobin that they measure within the car, and they determine how many people should be emitting that within that car to determine how many people are in that car. So a blow-up doll or your dog in that car will not assist you in the carpool lane any longer. So that has now branched into law enforcement. It was heavily deployed several years ago in Highland. They received a grant, technology grant. It's on every one of their patrol cars. They have, um, fixed cameras throughout the city, and, and their goal is to create a virtual fence around the city. They add four new stationary cameras a year. And some of the execs, successes has been, the city of Highland has seen a significant increase in arrests for people in stolen vehicles, because it's taking a picture, running against that database, and it's alerting officers that that is a stolen vehicle. But they're seeing a reduction in thefts of stolen vehicles in the city, because they are arresting the people that are driving stolen cars into the city to leave in a stolen car. So they're catching them before they can steal a residence car. Uh, I'll get to that one in just a minute, too.
Sorry, I got to tell you a quick story. Um, today in Rancho Cucamonga, where I work, um, we have one of these cameras set up, um, in part of the city, and it's a, it's a portable one, where you can move it around. And we had it set up at about three o'clock this afternoon. It captured the plate of a guy wanted for a serious felony crime here in Loma Linda. But by the time we got the information, he had gotten onto the two, the two-ten freeway and already gotten away. But it was a, it was a crime, it was a guy wanted here in Loma Linda, and he had just happened to drive through Rancho and got picked up by one of the plate readers this afternoon. It just, timing, he, he ended up slipping onto the freeway before we got there, but I thought that was an interesting connection, so.
The, um, some recent success stories would be, a couple of months ago, there was a burglary in progress in Highland, and the victim drove up as the guy was running out with his plasma TV. So the victim was able to get a brief description of the suspect, color of the car, and four license plate numbers, the first four license plate numbers. And he saw where the veh-vehicle left the area. Well, fortunately, Highland City has a camera on that intersection, and they were able to pin down the timeframe. So as a deputy is arriving on scene to take the police report and gather information, a deputy's at the station actually running it through the system, going through every car that went through that intersection within the last fifteen minutes. He found a match for the first series of license plates, so he emailed a picture to the deputy's smartphone. So as the deputy's talking with the victim, taking a report, asking if that's the car, and said it was the car. Were able to run that, um, registered owner, and it came back to a house in San Bernardino. So we sat two officers over at the house in San Bernardino, and they sat on that house. With the registration, since they now have the license plate number, ran the registration, brought up the guy's driver's license information, got his picture, emailed the picture to the officer on scene. He identified that as the guy that was running out of his house with the TV. All this occurred before the guy showed up where we were sitting and waiting for him, stole property from four other houses. So we were able to clear five burglaries in that short timeframe, simply knowing where the guy was going to be. Basically able to tell the future. It's very, very interesting. It's great technology. It's being used. The, um, bank industry is really driving this forward, because they've created their own databases for vehicles that are embezzled and are not being paid for. So they have people driving around in private vehicles looking for license plates of vehicles that need to be repoed. I believe the, um, incident that Councilman Duper's talking about would be a, a lady that was assaulted with a weapon earlier this week in Loma Linda, and all her teeth were broken out. We were able to locate his license plate number, we ran it through the system. We had so many pictures of that vehicle, is that we actually saw that he had painted it in between the crimes. So we now knew the new color of the car, and we were able to put a stop and arrest locator on that vehicle. So it's outstanding technology. With that, um, I was on a committee that's looking at the future technology for the department and trying to make this standard issued technology for every patrol car. We were able to se-secure a grant, and with that, we're supplying one of the patrol cars here in Loma Linda with four cameras, and, uh, that's free of charge to the city here. And we have, uh, future plans, been working with JARB, of, um, getting a camera donated by that company, that we can put up here as a stationary camera, and run that from the, for the city, free of charge as a test pilot for the department. We've even talked with JARB and, uh, looking at putting a virtual fence around the city, every vehicle in and out of the city. And that way that we can arrest people when they're coming in to steal cars, with stolen cars, and, and you can solve multiple other crimes. The state of California's moving forward with them. DMV, of course, wants to get involved. They're going to start going around looking for vehicles that are, um, expired registration or non-ops, so they can start towing vehicles. And, uh, I, I think it's a great way with technology. Right now, um, negotiations with the new company, it's looking about sixteen thousand dollars to supply a, a patrol vehicle with four cameras. We actually have a couple of different fundraisers coming up for the COPs, and they want to buy two cameras to put on their car, so they can drive around and take pictures and help out the community. And the stationary cameras are about, about thirty thousand dollars in intersection for two lanes going one direction. And then, um, when a car goes through that intersection and, and it takes a picture and emits back to the computer, it's run through the computer, that actually emails dispatch, e-mails the officers in the area and notifies them of where that, uh, vehicle went through in the direction of travel and what it's wanted for.
How, how long does it take for Edward Snowden to hear about?
That's where I was going. You're reading my mind. I'm a law-abiding citizen, and I'm getting paranoid watching all this stuff. Where's Elmer Kellon's going to spot me doing something I'm not supposed to do?
We want you to think that, so you won't do anything you're not supposed to.
I want to be there. You got home at seven-thirty, huh? Seven-thirty-two.
And always following a girl in a car, woman or whatever. Um, you know, that technology is for law enforcement purposes only, it's not sold. We don't provide that to anybody else. It is going on, like I said, private companies are huge on it right now for repos. You know, everywhere you go with your cell phone, law enforcement eventually knows where you're at, every phone call you make, so.
That tells me Phil Duper's watching over me every time I move, so. Hey, when the city manager tells you that he, he knows when you flush your toilet by watching the water meters, it's government.
Just to let you know the, the crime statistic for the city of Loma Linda, you can go to the sheriff's website and, and, you download it every, every day, right?
Yes, um, Crime Mapping downloads every night at midnight, where you can see current crimes and current crime trends. You can create a virtual, um, area around where you live, and it'll actually email you at midnight, because my wife had this, and it woke me up every night. But it will email you of what crimes occurred in your neighborhood within the twenty-four-hour period. And also, the, um, all of the, uh, statistics for every station are on the sheriff's website, yeah.
And at the city hall here, we have a monitor, we have a map showing the, the crime within the city, so.
You know, but back to this technology. Imagine, and this is a big, big thing that I'm looking for, and I'm pushing for the department and, and the committee I'm on, that you put in this system, every car identified through every sexual predator in the state of California, and then you create a virtual gate around every park, every school. Anytime those guys go within that area, you're automatically going to know. It, it's all about saving our children, preventing crime. I mean, that's where I see the greatest, greatest, uh, power behind this technology. It's just amazing.
Excellent report, Steve. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
I, I appreciated it and enjoyed it, and I'm a little intimidated by it, but that's my problem. I'll deal with it. But I would like a little additional data related to the arrest records-
Absolutely.
-to know what we're arresting people for. I'm curious to know if, you know, if it's a violent crime or substantially less than that, and what the proportions are.
Sure.
But thank you so much. This was very good. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Uh, next is music to the ears of two of our members, but oral reports pertaining to the June election.
Councilmembers, the close of nomination period for, um, candidate nominations for the June three, twenty-fourteen election, ended, uh, Friday, March seventh. At the conclusion of that day, there were two nominees. They were Councilman Daley and Councilman Duper. They were qualified, um, candidates, and there were no others. So at this point, the city council does have some options pursuant to the elections code. You can appoint to the office the person who have been nominated, or any other eligible voter, uh, or you could hold the election. At this point, I would recommend that you actually close the nomination period and cancel the election. And in order to do that, uh, I do have to make a publication in the newspaper. It would have to be, um, forwarded to the newspaper tomorrow for publication no later than Saturday, in order to comply with the very short deadline of March twenty to cancel the election. That would also mean that you would, it would be necessary that you meet on March twenty, which is a Thursday, to actually adopt the resolution canceling the election. So what I'm asking you to do tonight is to adjourn this meeting to Thursday, March twenty. You may specify the time. It would be an adjourned regular meeting, and that item would be the only item on the
Yes, it would probably be unsightly, but the gentleman to my right would like to make that motion. And all we, we, we would essentially, uh, would the conflict of interest prevent the other gentleman from voting, and if so, then would the rest of us have to show up? Let's-
Yes, you, you would need the three who are not interested to be president.
Okay.
And then I would also add that the, um, two candidates would then take office, just as they would have the election been held, so it'd be after June three, and would be seated some point in July. That process continues.
Okay, and we use the rule of necessity when there were three of us involved in this?
Yes.
I don't remember. Okay, so is there a motion to continue to adjourn within a continuation to March twenty?
I need a specific time.
Seven P M.
It does have to be advertised and included in the publication.
Seven P M would be reasonable. Thursday.
Next Thursday.
I'll make a motion that we reconvene on, uh-
March twenty.
March twentieth at seven P M.
You want to do it, um, some other time, so if you can go home earlier, six thirty?
You can actually do it any, any time, I'm very curious.
Yeah, but seven P M is fine.
Yeah, okay. And can we allow a lot of the officers not to show up? I hope so, because I'd hate to have finance show up. Uh, I think you'd be conflicted out anyway, so, yeah, don't even come.
I remember watching you from my perch at home.
I think you have to, I think you have to worry about it.
It's over.
Yeah.
So this vote is to, to appoint or to call an election or?
We're adjourning it to that meeting to make the decision, but-
Yeah, do we make the decision then what to do? Or do we agendize what we're planning to do, what we instruct you to do now? Which, which way?
You instruct me now. And if you decide to cancel the election, then you'd be meeting on March twenty to actually adopt the resolution that does cancel the election.
Okay.
Which means then there are no write-in candidates. That process stops.
Okay, so we decide today-
Correct.
-what to do.
Well, you're not technically making the final decision today. You're just setting the date to do that and-
But I'm instructing the clerk to go forward with the process.
But by, by setting that date, we're tipping our hand that we're going for a cancellation of the election.
Well, you're making it possible to do so.
Okay, okay.
So there's-
You made up your mind already? I have not. I've, I'm waiting for, for a serious, I'm waiting for serious, serious, uh, testimony. Uh, did you second or you made the motion?
Second.
Okay, yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 And those in the house. And two, two extensions. Do we, do we need to get them out of the room before we do the final discussion?
No.
So it was, uh, the meeting was adjourned to that night was, was the only-
That was the motion, yeah. So, we will go to our, I like to throw a wrench in the housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
We already had our closed session report. And is there any action that needs to happen?
I approve, make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose no. The opinion of the chair, it's unanimous that we approve the, the consent calendar. Are there any member reports? Any reports of officers? Okay, we're adjourned. Now, the successor agency agenda, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Does anyone have an opinion of the consent calendar?
Just clarification. So we filed a lawsuit against the Department of Finance and therefore against the Oversight Board?
What, what, what happened is when we filed a lawsuit against the, the state, they all, we also named the Oversight Boards.
Which is ourselves, kind of.
Right, which is the, the entity that will receive the benefit from, from the, uh, the lawsuit.
Okay.
So at one of the, um, successor agency, Oversight Board, I'm sorry, at one of the Oversight Board meeting, one of the members asked that we should have a, an attorney to, to report back to the committee what's going on with the lawsuit.
So we're hiring the law firm to tell the Oversight Board what the city of Loma Linda is doing?
Correct.
And who's paying for this?
Will be from the, um, part of the, um-
Administrative.
Administrative fee, which the minimum we receive is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it come from that.
So we're going to pay the law firm ten thousand dollars to tell us that we're suing the city of California?
No, it's to defend, it's to defend me.
But that's an update of the, the lawsuit.
It's to defend me and Conrad and the other members of the Oversight Board from our own lawsuit. And it's, it's just, it's part of the legal strategy and don't ask me to-
It makes no sense. But my question is, is this common practice across the state? I mean, it seems like this whole thing is just a, a huge money-making opportunity for the lawyers. Ten thousand dollars is crazy.
This, this, right now, it's just kind of a vow payment and it starts over ten, you know, and, and we pay at, at the time of trial.
I'm, I'm just curious, because, I mean, it seems like all we're doing is creating legal fees. So we're suing and therefore we're going to hire another attorney who represents us and another attorney to defend us. It, it makes absolutely no sense whatsoever.
Well, I, I was not consulted on this, but my understanding is that, um, because the lawsuit that we've filed was required to name the Oversight Board-
I understand that.
-as an interested party, not so much as a defendant, that that interested party is required to have legal representation with the court. And, uh, so this agreement provides for that. It would be, it would not be an adversarial situation, I would say.
Yeah, and the ten thousand dollars is sufficient to cover it and probably with some excess. So it will not, probably the entire mountain will not be spent.
So how, so we're making decisions to hire this law firm? How do we just, why is it that we want to do this, proceed a law firm? Why couldn't we have someone else do it? Why them?
The, this firm has experience in our redevelopment law. Um, they actually represent other successor agencies, other Oversight Boards from other jurisdictions, um, essentially in the same manner that, that Mark Hips represents, um, our successor agency and our board at this point.
Yeah, I, I still think it looks like it's someone, helping someone get business. I, I'm not sure it's needed, but, oh, well.
Feel free to vote no.
Are you overlooking the free ream of photocopy that are included with the cost?
Okay, has the discussion ended? Okay, those in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose no? Okay, so we have a vote of four to one, the no being cast by the mayor pro tem for the consent calendar. Uh, that is adjourned and I believe that's our last adjournment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could you confirm who made the motion and seconded it?
The motion was, I don't remember.
I don't think it was. I don't know if anybody did.
Somebody did.
I did.
Okay. Leonard made the motion and Duder made the second.
I'm, I remember.
And if somebody has a recording to the contrary, let us know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I didn't get on my button soon enough back on reports of officers in the, uh, the city council agenda. I did have one, a response to a question from last meeting and follow-up. Dr. Daley asked a question about the budget, which I gave a insufficient answer. And, um, as I was walking out the door, the dog hit my head with a very clear answer when we had additional money at mid-year for the fire department personnel budget. We talked about some retirements, yes, but the biggest portion of that additional expenditure, we started that strategy roughly, now, three or four years ago now, when the significant downturn in the economy. Every year we had money and personnel budget to manage fire season, mutual aid responses, uh, any injuries, anything like that that might arise. Many years that, those dollars weren't spent. We started laying off employees around the city, um, you know, for the money that sometimes we turned, we, uh, we gave back at the end of the year. Uh, the strategy was, let's cut that out of the budget, but at mid-year, bring me back all your receipts. So we bring our, our receipts back for all our mutual aid responses on our injuries, the monies that have come in into refunds and reimbursements from workmen's comp. So those were the dollars that we added back into the budget. So along with that expenditure was a revenue source, uh, to the corresponding revenue source for the most part. And we may have, they're a little bit in there for some retirements and some cash outs. That would not have a revenue, but the, the biggest portion of those monies are funds we've already received back into rean, funds and reimbursements. And so we put them back in so, um, to replace that overtime expenditure, if that makes sense. So, sorry for the, uh, we've been doing that two or three years now and it's, it's working.
Thank you for that clarification. That's helpful.
Okay, then I believe we're adjourned from all meetings. Come back next time. Yes, come back on, uh, Thursday night.
Not this Thursday, next Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday, yeah. The twentieth, September.
You don't have to refuse yourself.